Good evening, I'm Eric Carey. I'm the current president of the El Segundo Kiwanis Club, and I'd like to welcome you to our forum and thank our city council candidates for being here this evening, taking the time to answer your questions. And thanks to all of you for coming in to hear their views on the issues that are important to our residents. A quick word about the Kiwanis Club for those of you who aren't sure what we do. The Kiwanis Club of El Segundo was established nearly 100 years ago for the purpose of giving back to our community, especially to support kids. We support local events, school groups, scholarships, and more, and are grateful to be able to contribute to making our small town great. We host events year-round like the Main Street Fair, the El Segundo Kiwanis Cup Golf Tournament, the Chili Palooza, as well as the Fourth of July Piety Contest and the Halloween Costume Contest. We love making a difference while having fun together, and we're always welcoming new members who want to keep El Segundo amazing. Tonight, we are proud to host this Candidates Forum, where we hope to provide the public with an opportunity to become a bit more familiar with the candidates and their positions about the issues that affect our town. We'll be asking questions that have been submitted directly by community members online. We have received a large number of questions. We definitely will not get through all of them this evening. So if you have a question that isn't addressed tonight, please feel free to reach out to the candidates directly. And if you haven't done so already, please, pretty please, silence your cell phones. Our candidates will be asked questions with a 90-second time limit for their response. Each candidate will also give an introductory statement and a closing statement, which we will allow two minutes each for. Our El Segundo High School Key Club members, Anya Gupta and Estefani Cruz, will be our timekeepers. They will hold up a 30-second warning and a final stop card for each response. We also had several students from Key Club assist us for things like advertising, stage setup, and ushering tonight, so thank you to the El Segundo High School Key Club. Thank you also to the El Segundo Women's Club for working with Kiwanis to help us put on this event. You've been great. We appreciate the opportunity to partner with you on these forums. Big thanks also to El Segundo TV for filming tonight and putting it on YouTube for everyone to view later. Lastly, we want to thank our El Segundo High School staff, led by Steve Gephardt, for welcoming us onto campus, and Steve Werth, who does a tremendous job running this performing arts center. Thanks for your assistance in booking and using this beautiful venue, where we knew we would have plenty of seating for the community. We are pleased and appreciative. Please note that one of our candidates is not able to be with us tonight due to death in the family, so before attending, before our attending candidates begin with their introductions, I will read Chris Edum's statement that he has prepared for us. Dear citizens of El Segundo, I want to start by expressing my gratitude for your understanding during my absence from these forums. Recently, I lost my father, a man who was not only a great friend but also a source of invaluable wisdom and love. His presence will be deeply missed. As your elected city council member, I will dedicate myself to ensuring that El Segundo residents and their concerns remain the top priority for every decision I make. My commitment is to be the voice of the everyday citizen, advocating for the values that make our town special. 14 years ago, I chose to raise my family here because of the close-knit, safe community I witnessed while driving through El Segundo. I saw kids riding their bikes to school, walking with friends, and the kind of community spirit that is hard to find elsewhere. Since moving here in 2011, my three children have benefited from the exceptional education and amenities provided by El Segundo's schools and Parks and Rec Department. My eldest graduated from the University of Nevada Reno in 2023. My daughter is currently attending Cal State Long Beach, and my youngest son is proudly serving in the Navy. The success of my family is a testament to the nurturing environment that this city provides, and I am committed to preserving that legacy for future generations. As a member of the city council, I will champion the needs of working-class families. I've experienced the challenges of living paycheck to paycheck, owning a home in West Los Angeles, and I moved my family to El Segundo because I prioritized raising my family in this great city. This gives me a unique perspective. I bring no vested financial self-interests, but instead a genuine commitment to policies that benefit all residents, not just homeowners, realtors, and real estate developers. My focus is on maintaining El Segundo as the best place to raise a family and supporting small businesses to ensure a prosperous future for our community. In addition to advocating for families and small businesses, I will also push for improvements to our parks, safety for our streets, and more efficient city planning. Our parks need attention. Projects should not be delayed due to bureaucratic holdups. When playground equipment is damaged, it should be repaired swiftly, not just boarded up, especially when it is there to serve our youngest members of the community. I also have ideas to improve the safety of e-bikers and pedestrians, and I will work towards housing solutions that are inclusive without sacrificing the character of our town. El Segundo deserves leadership that listens and acts for the benefit of all. I humbly ask for your support and your vote. We will now begin introductory statements of two minutes each, and we will start on this side of the stage, work towards that side. So, John, you're up first.
Okay. Thank you to the Kiwanis Club for hosting us, and thank you all for being here. I grew up in a small town outside of Philadelphia, in a place that I thought I'd never leave. But after graduating from Villanova University in 2013 with a degree in political science, I moved across the country to pursue my dream of working in entertainment. In 2016, I earned a Master of Fine Arts from Loyola Marymount University and worked in television for seven years before returning to coaching cross-country and track at LMU last fall during the Hollywood strikes. In fact, the last show I worked on premieres later this month, so be sure to catch The Prädips of Pittsburgh on October 17 exclusively on Amazon Prime. I live downtown with my partner Sean. My favorite part about living here isn't the weather or the two spots to enjoy a Philly soft pretzel, including the tavern, which of course we all know is a Philadelphia Eagles bar. What I appreciate most is the sense of community. It's hard to go out for a run around town without stopping to chat with neighbors and friends along the way. Sean and I want to continue to build our life here, start a family here. I may not have grown up in El Segundo, but I moved here because I found a piece of home in El Segundo. And over the years, I've immersed myself in our community. I'm the chairperson of the Arts and Culture Committee. I was a volunteer coach for El Segundo High School cross-country, and until last year, I was the 10K record holder for the Run for Education. Come to think of it, if I didn't stop and chat with so many people on my runs, maybe I still have that record. The thing I'm most proud of, though, is co-founding a community organization committed to making El Segundo an even more welcoming place. I'm running for city council because I bring a value set not quite represented on the council. One that recognizes we've long been facing a housing crisis and need action now. One that goes the extra mile to make sure everyone in town feels represented. And a value set that cherishes our small-town charm while embracing innovative solutions to meet the needs of all residents now and in the future. If elected, I will help foster a more vibrant and inclusive city where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Carol?
Thank you, everybody, for coming. My name is Carol Prostik. I'm a native of El Segundo, a graduate of El Segundo High School, and Loyola Marymount University. My career has expanded and crossed many different industries. I was a corporate buyer, a vice president at Sony Pictures, and I'm currently the CEO of the El Segundo Education Foundation. In 2002, my husband and I moved our family back to El Segundo along with our two businesses, an Irish dance company as well as a glass company. We wanted our kids to grow in a community that was safe, had great schools, access to amazing parks, and we wanted our children to be surrounded by people who love their community. When I joined the council eight years ago, it was to give back to the community that gave me so much, and I'm proud of the accomplishments we have made, especially as a team. We've implemented strategic planning, net-zero budgeting, we created a arts percentage for arts, and we created a tech and arts club, or committee, excuse me. We passed Measure BT, which updated our business taxes, which hadn't been updated since 1970. We paid down our debt, and we started to invest in capital improvement. I look forward to answering your questions tonight so you can get to know me. I'm a forward thinker, collaborator, and a connector, and the things I value for this city is safety, education, fiscal responsibility, and ensuring that the residents receive the services they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Michelle, you're up.
Thank you. Well, my husband Chris and I moved here in 2011 to raise our family. It was for the same reason so many others do: the strength of our school system and the idea of El Segundo as the safe nook in the greater Los Angeles area. And while both of those things have certainly proven to be true, what I had not anticipated at the time was how fiercely connected the residents of El Segundo are to one another. I believe it is our defining trait and, in many ways, our superpower. Even just walking up here tonight, I had a chance to speak with so many community volunteers and doers in all different areas that light us up. And for me, it's this: it's city government. I believe deep in my soul that local politics matter. Our elected officials have a hand in so many decisions, large and small, that really do impact our daily lives. I'm running for city council to represent our residents' interests, and that is every resident in every quadrant of this community. I will lead with your needs first and the same solution-focused mindset that has guided me my entire life. For the last six years, I've been honored to serve on the Planning Commission and as chair for the last two. I'm incredibly proud of the work that we've done, particularly in achieving a state-certified housing element that addresses state mandates while maintaining our small-town character. And I really do understand why this matters. I think it directly speaks to our connectivity as a community. When I went to graduate school to receive my degree in business and city and regional planning, it was with the intention of creating communities much like El Segundo. And while our robust economy is an economist's dream, what I have come to understand is that it's the people who live here who truly define who we are. And it is the residents of El Segundo that I will be representing on council as I advocate for our environmental health, our capital improvement needs, our public safety, and essential services. I look forward to answering your questions tonight on those topics and others. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Michelle. Drew?
Thank you, Eric. Can you hear me okay? Yes? Yes? Yeah? Okay, hold on, hold on. Is that better? Jay's giving me a thumbs up. Okay. It's great to be here. This isn't quite the Gundo Boys premiere turnout where it was packed in here, but we're thankful to have everyone here tonight. Thank you to Kiwanis and Key Clubs. A 20-year member of Kiwanis, I'm thankful to see these youngsters. They really are the future of El Segundo, so thank you for being here tonight. 28 years ago, I drove down Grand Avenue and stumbled onto a for-rent sign that basically changed my life. I met Mike De Taylor, still in business on Main Street, rented a two-bedroom apartment from him as a single dad, and this town changed my life and it shaped my kids' lives. All five kids, my wife Lee, we've raised our kids here. We've started new businesses in this town. I led economic development for this city back in 2014, and I've been your mayor since 2018. When I ran in 2016, I made a commitment: a commitment to improve public safety, to improve our finances, which were in dire straits at the time, to improve residential satisfaction, and to improve our infrastructure, and I'm happy to say we have done all of those things. On the public safety front, we were at impasse at the time in 2016 with police and fire. We now have seven collective bargaining units, all of our union groups, that are completed with multi-year agreements. We also have a novel idea that I brought to city council was arbitration agreements. Arbitration agreements are now signed by all seven union groups in town. Public safety continues to be a focal point and one that I am absolutely committed to. On the finances, in 2016, we had a $65 million general fund budget. We now have a $95 million general fund budget with no increases to your resident taxes. I'm proud of that as well. We have so much more to do, so why am I running? People have asked. I want to continue to fight for our air quality and improvements with Hyperion. I want to continue to improve public safety and homelessness. I want to address our housing challenges, which are going to be absolutely at the forefront of this city for the next few years, and I want to continue to strengthen our relationships in the region. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Drew. Lance?
Good evening. My name is Lance Giroux, and I have been a 24-year resident and homeowner. I have two children, two kids that both went through this school district. One just graduated last year, and one is a junior in this high school right now. Been married for 25 years and also am the executive vice president of a local company that you drive by very often on Maple and PCH. It's a footwear company. So I have been involved for a very long time in this community, and the biggest part of this has been the amount of volunteerism I've done over those years. I've been involved with the El Segundo Little League and the El Segundo Girls softball boards. I did one for five years, one for three years. I was the president of both of those. I was a member of the Citizens Oversight Committee for the school bond, also a member of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and even a board member for the El Segundo Ed Foundation. So I actually want to thank you all for being here tonight, those who, some familiar faces, many of you were here last Wednesday as well, and for those who have watched this or watched the one from last week on El Segundo TV. And the reason I want to thank you is because you made a choice. You chose to be curious and not judgmental. You chose to ask questions and not make assumptions. And the thing I thank you most for is you chose not to be a keyboard warrior who sits behind a monitor and just spews things out on social media that aren't true with no repercussions behind it. You chose to take ownership over what your vote is, and that is the most important thing. You chose to become informed, and I appreciate that very much. You're here tonight to figure out the why. You're here to maybe look at one candidate, maybe figure out how to fill out the rest of my ballot, but you want to know why. Why should I vote for them? Why should I not vote for them? And it's really my hope over the next couple of hours that you get all your questions asked and that you figure out the why is someone like me that you will vote for on that day. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lance. We'll now start our first question with John, and just a reminder, keep responses to 90 seconds, please. Our first question is, what will you do to address the homelessness in town, especially now that Governor Newsom has given cities the green light to clear homeless encampments? And what do you think the best way is to approach removing homeless encampments?
I think the best way to approach the homelessness issue is through collaboration, and that's something the city is doing really well right now. I've always been a fan of the police department's approach to homelessness. It was always one of compassion, and you can hear anecdotes of them relocating unhoused people with a bus ticket back home. It's something we do very well, and it's something we're improving upon, and the biggest difference now is the Patches Program, which takes that compassionate response but involves all city departments and makes sure that there is proper data collection and that we are keeping track of the situation to get people the help that they need. I want to make sure that that is executed as humanely and compassionately as possible because, to your point, the recent Supreme Court decision does change enforcement opportunity, and I want to make sure that's a last resort. But at the end of the day, these are just addressing symptoms. Cities like El Segundo and cities across all of California and the country, really, are all facing a similar housing crisis, and until we address that problem, the root of it, we're going to be just relocating, you know, if we get to enforcement, just relocating unhoused people from city to city. We need to treat the symptoms, yes, but we really need to get at the root cause of it with practical housing solutions.
Carol?
So last year at our strategic planning, we talked a lot about homelessness, and through that collaboration, we came up and derived the program, the Patches Program. What the Patches Program does is it brings all departments together to support the homeless. So each department has a goal and objective and an approach on how to reach out to the homeless and provide services. Prior to that, pretty much the responsibility fell on the police department, but it's not just the police department that needs to help the homeless. It's all departments, it's the whole city. So we took a holistic approach to providing services to our homeless. As far as the homeless, we really need to ensure that they get the services they need, and that's one of the things, the goal of the Patches Program is to continue to do outreach to the people that are homeless and ensure that they get the services they deserve. And as a city, we're committed to ensure, and as a council member, I'm committed to ensure that the homeless get the services they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Michelle?
Thank you. I think you'll hear some consistency in this answer. It's a great example of something the city has done exceptionally well. The Patches Program is a cross-departmental effort, right? And it takes all of us. It is not just the burden of the police department or residents individually, so it's run out of the city manager's office with Public Works, with the Fire Department, all engaged in this process. And to Carol's point and to John's point, it is working with compassion. So it's my understanding that the goal is to touch every homeless member in the community three times before any other sort of action is taken. That has been made available based on recent Supreme Court rulings. We know that there are 13 individuals in the community, 42 shelters, and those numbers are important. Our Community Engagement Division of our police department really knows who those individuals are, and are going out repetitively and very compassionately making those touchpoints, and that is huge. I do just want to touch on the housing component. You know, again, 13 individuals, 42 encampments or shelters of some kind. I don't personally believe that that needs to be incorporated into any sort of a housing or an affordable plan for the city of El Segundo. What we're doing in this regard is really the best effort. We have ride-alongs with LA County Health Services Department, and I'm very proud of the way that the city has proactively approached this.
Thank you. Drew?
Yeah. We do have housing available. Actually, there's housing available to those that are homeless in Gardena right now. The challenge is not the housing side of the equation. The challenge is that these individuals, in often cases, do not want help. And so one individual in particular, I know this from a recent Patches meeting, had been interacted with 125 times in one year. That's once every three days. That's police, that's fire, that's recs and park, that's a library. These people require constant interaction. Having gone on a ride-along back in 2016, I can tell you that they are very skeptical when police, even police with a mental health therapist comes along to make a visit. So it takes a lot of coaxing, a lot of encouraging. I met with city councilwoman Tracy Park recently. She runs CD-11 just in the north of us, because we need to collaborate with the region. There are 88 cities in LA County. Every city is going to handle Grants Pass, the new Supreme Court ruling, differently. So can you imagine if a city with a huge homeless population decides they're going to start civilly and criminally enforcing? Where are they going to go? Just today, I saw two new homeless people at the bus stop, and when you ask the chief, what do you do? Call it in. Call 911, make them aware. And one of the things that I ask for is to start measuring the interactions and the outcomes with every individual in town and inventory them, and the city manager is actually held accountable to that as part of his, pardon, excuse me, part of his performance bonus plan. So we got to continue to focus on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Drew. Lance?
We were very fortunate to have the opportunity to hire Chief Saul Rodriguez. I don't think he's here tonight, but if you get a chance to see that man, we are very lucky to have an individual with that kind of experience. It's because of him and his staff that we have this Patches project that you keep talking about. As city council, we just had the fortunate position of being able to approve it. So, but let's make sure we realize it's their experience and their know-how that put this together, really the first of its kind, and very comprehensive. There was one quote I want to take, I think I might be paraphrasing Luke Muir, so if you're listening, hopefully I'm taking it out of context, but he mentioned, "The enforcement, we will enforce strongly but compassionately and not at the expense of the residents." And I think that's the key thing to take into consideration there. There definitely has to be compassion in this, and our officers, as everybody else has spoken about, have done a great job with that. They really have. I know this is a labor of love for Sergeant Muir, and the way he handles this has been excellent. But in the end, we need to make sure that as residents that we are not being affected by this. So there is a balance to be had there, and fortunately for us, we have officers and a chief that are well adept at this and ready to take this to the next level and for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. For our second question, Carol, you will start. How do we make progress on our capital improvement needs, and what do you see as the biggest need? How do we make, I'm sorry, how do we make progress on our capital improvement needs, and what do you see as the biggest need?
So when I joined council eight years ago, we had not invested in our capital improvement, and currently today, we have about a $60 million backlog of capital improvement projects. So for the last eight years, we've been trying to save money and earn more money so that we can start investing, and I'm pleased to say that we've started actually investing in our capital improvements, especially our parks. The plunge is something that's very near and dear to me. It was a commitment by a previous council that we would improve the plunge and bring it back to life, and I'm happy to say we started construction a couple months ago, and it should come back online in December 2025 so every student can learn to swim in our town. In addition, our parks and recs are real important, and they are falling into disrepair. So to be fiscally responsible, we broke up the improvement of our parks and recs into three phases, and we are now finalizing the design of Phase One, which includes the skate park and the teen center and some modification of the fields. I'm hoping that, once I want to get on council again, is to really focus on ensuring that those capital improvement projects are completed and that we get all three phases of the parks' renovation done, which includes the Johnson Center and the clubhouse. And those would be my focus going forward. Thank you.
Michelle?
Yep. So as Carol noted, $60 million that I believe is unfunded. So the total capital improvement needs assessment is $120 million over 20 years. It's huge, and I think what you will hear us all say tonight is it's a big reason, at least for me personally, that I want to be involved in this process. An example that I use about what happens when we are delayed in getting that money out the door. So we have $60 million that has maybe been allocated or that we know where it's going to go, but an example of this, the Phase One improvements to our field irrigation system, teen center, park area, sports courts, was estimated to cost $5 million in 2022. To date, and I know that there's been a recent approval, so hopefully this is going to move forward, but to date, we have allocated $900,000 in design costs and related contingencies. At a recent council meeting, it's now estimated that the cost of that project has grown to $8.7 million. So the issue here is when we don't get the money out the door, residents lose. It costs us more. So breaking those into smaller pieces and really making sure that we are expediting construction costs is huge. The other component to this is the money that we do have held in reserve, for example, to the plunge. I think we have $25 million in a capital improvement program fund. That money should be generating some interest. It might not be much. We're going to have to put it in a very safe investment, but the money that we have sitting in reserve should be making money for the city.
Drew?
Yeah, a couple of projects I'd like to see come to fruition is Safe Routes to School, really important, especially given the e-bikes and the onslaught of multimodal transportation throughout town. That's a project that we have on our list. Really fortunate, we have a capital improvement advisory council, and they go through all of the projects that we're considering, using a matrix and score those for us, and then during our strategic planning and budget process, we look to those, make a few adjustments along the way. But we're grateful to have that input. And public input is not without its challenges. It takes more time, unfortunately. When we were designing the teen center, the skate park, and the basketball court, we wanted to make sure we got that right. When we finally came to a design, we asked, I think it was two city council meetings ago, to expedite the process. How can we get this done faster? That might require a couple committees to have back-to-back meetings. So be it, let's do it. So we're doing everything we can to expedite these projects while getting public input. In 2016, we actually had zero, $0 set aside for capital improvement projects. None. No dollars. Recently, we found as much as $35 million for these projects. How do we do that? We reduced operating expenses in the city, we grew the economic base, and again, we did not increase residents' taxes. So there's a lot more, as my colleagues have said, there's a lot more to be done, and we have to get creative about how we do that, how we find the money and add value to our residents. Thank you.
Lance?
The biggest need for sure is rec park, and we have broken it up into phases. I think the initial one, when the first of the park needs assessment, I think it was about $40 million, and I'm like, okay, we're not going to be able to do $40 million. Let's just kind of drop it up so that we're actually getting something accomplished. But to your point, it has been very slow and is very frustrating. I'm not going to lie to you, it really is, but I think we're finally starting to make some progress there. The biggest challenge, however, to me, is, aside from having $60 million and unfunded, is that there's no plan for maintenance. I don't say no plan. There's not a great plan for maintenance. So here we are, ready to build a $15 million pool, and we have no plan for how we're going to maintain it, because it's going to cost $1.5 million a year out of the general fund to actually maintain something like that. And it's the same thing for rec park. We build courts, but we don't figure out how much it's going to cost to maintain those courts, so they fall into disrepair. So part of the solution to all of this is not just getting these programs done, but having a viable program or maintenance program to ensure they do not fall into disrepair and so that they last longer and that we wouldn't have to keep redoing them as often as we are. So I think those are the most important pieces to look at, and for sure, looking at cost recovery and items like that are important in the overall plan for recovery and items like that are important in the overall plan for capital improvements. Thank you.
John?
I agree with a lot that's been said. In my role as chairperson of the ACC, I sit on what's called the Parks and Rec Renovation Subcommittee. Now, mainly there, for one, Public Arts is on the agenda, which with the projects we're working on right now, it's, it's not, you know, top of mind. So I'm more so an observer in these meetings, and the fellow committee members on there are very passionate about this city. They have strong opinions, and sometimes they differ, but over the course of these meetings, they come to a solution, a compromise. And then what I see is that then goes to council, and then there's this same debate. I understand all of these committees are advisory in nature, but if we really want to speed up the process, I think if we can almost rubber stamp what the experts discussed at length, we'll move a lot faster in getting things done. I agree with Michelle that in order to keep these projects funded, we should be investing this money to generate some interest, generate a yearly annual income essentially, to be paying for these projects. After the parks, excuse me, after the teen center and the skate park and the fields, I think we should prioritize the Jocelyn Center. I know that's, that's on the docket. That's a great resource for our seniors that offers a ton of free and engaging programming. I also think we need to take a hard look, and we are doing this, but expedite the process of looking at our infrastructure as it relates to sewers and storm pumps, because we need to isolate these odors that we're smelling from hyperion so we can better address the issue that we're trying to cover.
Thank you, John. Michelle, you'll start with the next question. How do you feel the DEI Committee has done and how should it be directed in the future? How have you supported community cultural events such as the Juneteenth Festival, the City Pride Event, and the Festival of Holidays?
Thank you. I was initially, and still am, very supportive of the DEI Committee when it was originated a few years ago. And I think that they've done tremendous work, and I'll be honest, not necessarily in the areas that I had anticipated, but I shouldn't be surprised, and I'll tell you why. Really, it is hosting these community events, and that speaks so much to who we are as the city of El Segundo. In the same way that the schools will have a day of holly, will, you know, how much my mom enjoyed getting to come in and read a book about Hanukkah and how impactful that was, in a way, we should just take a note from our kids' pages. The opportunity to create more opportunities to come together and celebrate is never a bad idea. And I had a bit of an education or a lesson two years ago. I had, I have three kids, I had two baseball games, it fell on the Juneteenth event. And a very dear friend who I cherish and I love came to me and said, "It hurt my, I was upset that you didn't carve out time to come, and that showing up is key. Your presence oftentimes speaks more than your words." And that was a huge learning lesson for me. I felt like I'd been incredibly supportive, but by not prioritizing that, it sent a message that I would never want anyone to feel. So I think it is very important on council that we do continue to show up. One other thing I will say, the strategy session I listened to in April, our deputy city manager made a great point that DEI is more robust than maybe we're thinking about it. It's equity, inclusion, it's outreach to our senior community, to our younger demographic, making sure that everyone has access and is included in the process. And that's also how I would like to see us frame it going forward.
Drew?
Yeah. Back when we established, I was on the council when we established the DEI Committee, and I remember vividly a woman, actually, she's a city councilwoman from Manhattan Beach, Hildy Stern. She came to us and said, "We're interested in the same concept," and she wanted to know how we'd gotten it done. And she basically mirrored our concept, brought it to council, and then wasn't able to get that approved. She has since started a group called United Against Hate. We just had an incredible candlelight vigil across the street at Library Park the same night as back-to-school night. Unfortunately, I was running between the two, and I missed like four classes of my seniors' back-to-school night, but that's all right. It was an important event, and so many other things have led from the DI Committee. And the whole idea was to embrace and showcase cultural events and bring more open-mindedness and tolerance to the city of El Segundo. And one of the main charges, actually, was to look at our workforce as a city and see how we're represented, and then work with our employers in town, the aerospace corporations of the world and others, to find out how they're represented and to ensure that their employees feel safe and comfortable coming into the city of El Segundo. And we've made great strides in that area. I'm very proud of that. And then we have incredible now traditions, the Festival of Holidays, the poet laureate concept. Juneteenth was incredible. Congrats to Tanya Taylor for putting that on, and I think there's so much more to do. So it's been a good thing for the city of El Segundo, and I think there's more to be done in that area. Thank you.
Lance?
I'm actually the council liaison for both the DEI and the ACC, so these are, these are my committees. And I have to tell you, I'm very proud of what's happened with DEI. Their job was really to do an internal audit on the city. I know there was a lot of misunderstanding about what their role was actually going to be, but their job was to kind of take a look at how we do things as a city and how we can improve upon that, and they did an amazing job. Now, it took a while to get those four reports out, but also remember, it was kind of in the middle of the pandemic, and it also takes a while to get a group like that to work together. They were the first of their kind in this city and actually in the entire area. So they've done an amazing job with that. They've actually affected policy, they've helped us out with a lot of things, and they've really kind of shifted their focus on, into a little more outreach now for businesses as well. So they've done a great job on that. It's actually the Arts and Culture Committee who deals with the festivals, Festival of Holidays, and Pride and Juneteenth. So my big, my feeling on, on cultural events is that is the best way to have everyone experience what's around them and how diverse our city actually is. The Festival of Holidays from Diwali is another one that I didn't even know was in November, but you learn all these things from here. The Juneteenth Festival has brought in thousands of people into this city that never would have been here before. So they are all very valuable to us. I would love to see them continue, and I appreciate everything those two committees have done. Thank you.
John?
So my boyfriend Sean, who's here tonight, is one of the newest members of the DEI Committee. And he tells me that he brought a fresh energy to the committee, and I saw it. A lot of members that have been there from the start, they were ready to move on. He tells me that they're frustrated. They've done all of this work for the city, and it really hasn't been empowered in any meaningful way. Fortunate for Sean because many of those members, they feel re-energized by his presence there, and they're sticking around, and I have hope that we can get this right. You know, since 2021, one of the top five strategic goals of the city was to enhance diversity, equity, inclusion. I don't think we've done that. I can recognize that we made progress, but if you were to tell me that it was one of our top five goals, I wouldn't believe you unless I already knew. When this committee was started, there were sixty-nine applicants that applied. I don't think there's been a committee that's ever had that many people apply. But this council was adamant about populating the committee with people that weren't necessarily in favor of its mission, the thinking being that, well, there are some people in town who don't want this committee, so that voice should be represented too. I mentioned this in my last answer. I'm the chairperson of the Arts and Culture Committee. I can tell you right now, we have no one on our committee saying we shouldn't be doing anything with art. Okay? We need to take this seriously, not just check a box, and recognize that not everyone feels as welcome and valued in El Segundo as we would like them to be, and we need to change that.
Carol?
So I was on council when we approved the DEI Committee, and it was definitely, it was, it was the first, we're the first local committee, community to do it. And I'm proud that we were able to get it approved, and one of the goals was to ensure that we had representation of all communities on the, from the town on the committee. And I think we've accomplished that, and I'm very proud of the success that they've had in looking at our police department and our policies, at our fire department within our city, looking at our policies and sure, from a DEI perspective, that we are ensuring that there's inclusion and equity and diversity within our city. I think we are a better city when we listen to everybody, and it's important that we keep our ears open and we listen and we ensure that we're constantly looking and doing outreach to ensure that we're hearing from the community, the communities that are growing in our town. You know, when I, I, we, I teach Irish dancing, and I, a couple of years back, I was helping my daughter, my sister, teach at Center Street School a little Irish dance number. And I was, when I went to, went to the Center Street School, I hadn't been there in a long time, and when I went, I was quite surprised at how, how changed it was. So I think it's important that we're constantly looking to ensure that every voice and every community that's growing in our city has a voice and a representation at the DEI Committee, and that we listen to them and ensure that we encompass them and make them feel welcome in our town.
Thank you, Carol. Drew, you'll start with this next question. Has the city council made any decisions or taken any action in the last couple of years that you disagree with? What would you have done differently?
Yeah, one was recent. We approved an ERP software planning system that we didn't go out to bid for. And as someone who is a fiscal steward for the city, I didn't feel comfortable with that decision. And there was rationale, there was nothing illegal or unethical about that decision. But to me, when you're making a significant investment in software, having done that in a previous career, and with recurring software license fees and maintenance, that is one that should be taken very seriously. So I was a dissenting vote on that. There have been others. We have a really, I'd say we have a strong council in the sense that we have dissenting opinions, as we should have as a democracy. We are respectful with each other. We have great debate, and we facilitate the conversation, move on and get to a decision, and then we leave it behind us. So that's one that was recent. There haven't been that many, but that was one that I've made it clear how I feel about that decision publicly on several occasions, and I just ask that we, when we do things like that, we take those decisions very seriously, and we make sure that we have competitive bids, and we get the best product and ultimately the best return for taxpayer dollars.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Lance?
Actually, I'm going to echo Drew on this. I actually really enjoy the banter we have as a council up there. There's a lot of 3-2 and 4-1 votes, and you do not see that very often in city councils, I will tell you that. But it's fun up there, and but the good thing about it is I do think that we all want to get to the same goal, just sometimes we have a different road to get there. But to answer the question, I'm going to bring it up again. It wasn't that I didn't want the plunge, I just really didn't like the idea we had because we only had one idea. And the one idea cost $15 million with no way to pay it back, not even not pay it back, but you're going to get about a 20% cost recovery on it. So that was my, my problem with that. We want a plunge, but there's different ways to do it. Could have been an outdoor pool. Maintenance, a lot less on something like that. So I did lose that. I, like Drew with the ERP thing, this was, I think, three different council meetings. I did three as well, now this counts, this is four. Again, I understand the importance of it, I just didn't feel that the plan we had was the best one. But now, we shift. Now my job is, we got to figure out how to make it, make it a better cost recovery. So you shift from that, get over it, it's not personal, everybody has a good idea, it just didn't go my way on that, and it's fine. But now I have to shift to business. How do we make that the best possible, best possible project that we have, and how can we continue to have it in our community and have it be something that we're proud of? Thank you.
John?
So right now, the city has a request for proposal out for an update to the land use element, which essentially decides where and how housing can be built and development can be built. And it doesn't direct developers, well, I'll start with this. It directs developers to focus in already high-density congested areas. We have these high hopes for Smoky Hollow, which I share, but at the same time, we're trying to industrialize it, we're trying to put housing there. And I think there's a certain mixed-use element that can exist and succeed there, but the numbers that we have to hit as mandated by the state, they're not going to fit in that area. They're not going to fit in the Holly, Kansas neighborhood where we continue to have, excuse me, to see development proposal after development proposal. My solution is to look at what housing east of PCH would look like, to study it. So a decision that I'm not that satisfied with is how that land use agreement is not directing bidders to at least explore that. If we rewind a few years ago, in 2018, Metro had awarded the city a $650,000 grant essentially to study economic development across PCH, mainly connected to transit. But in that large grant, it required a small amount to look at what affordable housing would look like east of PCH. Whatever your opinion on that is, I know it's a sensitive subject, but the fact that our council is not even being proactive in looking in this issue, studying this issue when we still have local control of how it could be implemented is a problem.
Carol?
A vote, excuse me, a vote recently that I disagreed with was charging the AYSO to have a hosted parade down Main Street for opening day. The, the statement was that we offer a free parade for the Little League, but that's been grandfathered in. And I disagreed because I feel that just because they're grandfathered in doesn't mean that every youth organization shouldn't have the opportunity to march down Main Street. I also believe that we need to reevaluate our fees for our nonprofits. You know, nonprofits and community festivals bring revenue and bring the community together, and I think it's important that we don't overcharge our nonprofits to host events. And so going forward, that's something I'll be looking at to ensure that nonprofits continue to make us a community, the community that we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Two years ago, the then-city council enacted a pilot program to brown out Fire Engine Two, which is the engine on the east side of town, one of the two only engines that we have in town. And the motivation for this, I believe, is a cost savings of maybe $500,000 up to $1 million. And it was a pilot program, and it was tested, but I had concerns about increased response time and what that meant for safety in the community, and I was fairly vocal about it then. I remained vocal about it post-the-election as well, and it's back in circulation. And my understanding is that's because response times did increase, and that's not something that we want to play around with. So that was one decision that really sticks out in my mind that I would have voted differently on in the moment and still today. You know, that said, serving on Planning Commission currently as one of five decision-makers in that capacity, I will agree with what Lance says. Those meetings, hearing how, with the conversation, the comments that come from the dais, there really is an idea circulation that's thrown out, and that can, that can present itself in a number of different ways. So oftentimes, the decisions aren't approve or deny, it could be approved with conditions. And that conversation up there on the, on the dais is critical to that, and working with your fellow council members, with your fellow commissioners to get to the best ultimate result, and that's something I genuinely look forward to.
Thank you. Lance, the next question will be yours to answer first. What do you think is the biggest misconception of you as a candidate?
Wow, what a lob of softball at me. I don't know, but it's a misconception. I think I am definitely known as someone who is not afraid to take a position at any time on any topic regardless of how it might be perceived. Not all the things that we talk about up there are politically in our best interests. And I have never taken a position that, or I've always taken the position that it's important for your elected leaders to say what they mean and tell you how they feel and explain why they make the decisions that they do. That is, I think, what I'm known for. I know I'm turning this question into what I want it to be, but I think overall, that is kind of the most important piece there. So I think maybe the one of the misconceptions is, is that I kind of have a bull in a china shop kind of attitude about me, and there may be some truth to that on occasion, but in general, my, I always want to act up there in the best interests of this city and that you always know that that's what I'm doing. It's not what's in the best interests of me, it's what's in the best interest of the community. And sometimes it's difficult to take an unpopular position, but if it's the right thing to do, I am always going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
For me, I think there's a misconception from some people in town that, you know, being the newest resident on this stage, that I'm coming in here and trying to change El Segundo. I can tell you, one of the most encouraging things going door-to-door the last few weeks and in 2022 was knocking on someone's door who had lived here for thirty, forty, fifty, sixty-plus years, and then saying, "I always wanted someone like you to run. I've always felt the same way about a lot of these things, and it's nice to see someone out there." I'm not trying to change the town, I'm trying to make the town more reflective of the community that it represents. I think we have evolved a lot. In what I just said, we were already there in some cases. I don't think the city council has kept up with those attitudes of the majority of the residents. I get that this is a nonpartisan election, and I think that's important, and I think I get that this is a nonpartisan election, and I think that's important, and I think that's the way it should be. But I can't neglect the fact that I'm the only registered Democrat in this race in a city that voted sixty-five percent for Joe Biden. We have three incumbents on city council that are registered Republican, yet only twenty-seven percent of the town is registered Republican. My point in bringing this up is, I'm not, again, trying to change the town, I'm trying to make it more representative of who we are, and I bring with me a value set that I attach to that party that I think is missing right now, and I want to see it executed in a lot of the big policy decisions facing us.
Thank you. Carol?
So I do try to keep my private life separate from my political life. You know, I'm in the public a lot as a city council member, as well as the CEO of Ed Foundation. I'm out there constantly asking for money, for most of you, for the foundation, and, you know, making decisions and helping lead the city from a council perspective. You know, there's a lot about me, I'm of many facets. I'm also an adjudicator of Irish dancing, and I have a dance company, and I also have a small business and a glass company. I lead with common sense. That's the one thing I want people to know about me. I'm always very pragmatic, lead with common sense, and I always look to the future of what's happening. So when a decision's made, I'm usually ten steps ahead, thinking about the consequences of that decision. So sometimes, my brain goes faster than my voice, and I have to catch up. But at the end of the day, I lead with common sense, and I will always be pragmatic and fiscally focused when making decisions for the town. I think it's important that changes, change, we change with the community. One of my expertise in my professional career is that I'm a change management leader. That's what I did at Sony Pictures. I redesigned many departments, divisions. So I'm used to change, and I like to impact change, but I also want thoughtful change. And so, thank you, and thank, and that's, that's who I am. Thank you.
Michelle?
Thank you. I think when I first, when I ran for the first time in 2022, to some extent, it took some people by surprise. And although I'd been on Planning Commission for four years, it's not a very public-facing role, and many of my acquaintances up until that point knew me as Max, Lucas, and Jacob's mom. And without a doubt, that will always be my greatest role. But, you know, there's more to that, and though, and even though I do think that there's tremendous value in having a parent, a mom, who's still raising kids in this community on council, there is more to the story. Up until that point, everything that I'd done academically and professionally was really leading up to this role. I received a degree in economics. After college, I went on to live in New York and work for a government affairs company for two years. I went back to graduate school, earned a degree in business and city and regional planning, and twenty years ago, moved out to California to work with a community development group, privately held, family-owned, which allowed them to be a little more mission-focused. And the mission was, if we're going to build this project, how do we do it in a way that benefits the community? From there, I went on to work with a number of groups in all different product types. I've sharpened my property negotiation skills, my financial analysis skills, and it really has been leading up to this point where my kids are of an age, where I can devote more time to service, and for me, this is the right spot. So while I think I came into this known as one thing, my hope is, through the people I've been able to meet, you see a more complete picture of who could serve you on city council.
Thank you. Drew?
This is the hardest question we've gotten. So I think for people probably think, I was really struggling with this one, I think probably think Drew's had it easy, easy street. Drew's successful, five kids, living in a nice home. Life has been anything but easy for me, and it continues to be hard. And I'm, I'm a firm believer, life should be hard. It should not be easy, it should be a challenge. I've had challenges thrown at me my entire life, and I've embraced them. At seventeen, I joined the military, had my first child at seventeen, second child at nineteen. I had sole custody of my kids by the time I was twenty-two years old. I physically, physically, fiscally, excuse me, physically and fiscally raised those kids, because their mom was two thousand miles away. And I apologize for any teachers out there when my kids would show up disheveled in mismatched plaid clothes at Center Street in middle school, because I was busy. I was going to school at nights and weekends. USC for my MBA, school during the day. I continue to work really hard. I love working, whether it be my actual professions, my businesses, whether it be working on my family, taking individual family members on trips, different parts of the world, so that we can spend time together, whether it be working on my surfing, whether it be working out in the gym, whether it be working out for this city, I tirelessly work, and I love it. And I continually learn. I'm always learning, and I've had many failures, even recently. I'm going through an incredibly difficult time right now with my business, and we're going to get through it. So I embrace those kind of challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. John, next question starts with you. Let's talk about how the city decides who is the next mayor and mayor pro tem. Do you prefer the system we currently have in place, where the city council members themselves vote on who the mayor will be? Or should the positions be appointed on a rotating basis, or based on seniority on council?
I'll be honest, I don't have that strong of opinion on this. I know the other South Bay cities, they typically rotate, and it's more of an honorary title. I, I think there's something unique to El Segundo about how we, or I should say, the city council selects the mayor, you know, this form of representative democracy. I am fine with that continuing. I, I don't really have much more to say on it. I kind of like how we're, we're unique. I honestly would be fine either way, but I, I think in El Segundo, we, we are a little more unique, in that ninety-eight percent of our revenue comes from businesses. There's a little bit more happening here, and I think that position, while it is an equal vote, we do need somebody a little more front-facing, engaging with these businesses. So I guess over the course of this answer, I've convinced myself to continue with how we do it here.
Thank you. Carol?
So I like the way that we appoint a mayor. I think it's important that we have five equal voices on the council, because we truly then represent the community when we're making decisions. I have previously brought to, forward to, two agenda items to actually change the way we appoint the mayor, not, not the way we change the, point the mayor, but that we add term limits to the mayor position. I do believe that there should be, like, a mayor can be for four years, and then take a two-year, two-year hiatus off, and then go back again if they elect to. That gives people, the other people on the council the ability to become mayor, or have the opportunity to become mayor if so, if they so desire. So going forward, I would like to, I would prefer that if we appoint the mayor, but there, there is a four-year term limit, and then a hiatus, and then they can go back in after the two-year hiatus.
Thank you, Carol. Michelle?
I mean, I would say this might be the hardest question, beyond misconception, maybe especially when you're sitting next to the current mayor. I don't know. But I, I would agree that I think our current system of electing as a fresh city council is the right way to do it. I will tell you, it was one of the hardest questions that I was asked two years ago, was, okay, so you win, you're on city council, you're elected, who are you going to vote in for mayor? And I kind of dreaded that moment a little bit. We'll see if it comes with less trepidation this time around. But I, I don't have an issue with an idea of a term limit, or at least a hiatus, so that there is an opportunity to see how somebody new would take on that role of being kind of the, the center forward-facing of the city. I think new ideas are generally always a good idea. So I would be okay with if we were to make some adjustment, perhaps putting in a term limit, a two-year hiatus, and a comeback around. But it's not something that I've given a great deal of thought to, to date.
Thanks. Drew?
I think anyone who is mayor in 2024 should be mayor indefinitely. No, my colleagues probably expected that answer. I do relish the job, I'm not going to lie, it's been incredible. It's been an incredible opportunity. Anyone that gets it will just absolutely enjoy it. The challenges, the opportunities to be the spokesperson for the city, the opportunity to solve problems for people. You tend to be more of the go-to person, because people just want to talk to the mayor, that's how it is. It's nothing to do with me, I'm just, as Eric Bush would say, I'm just wearing the hat right now. I would say, though, when you, if it's a yes-or-no binary question, or two options there, I would say neither. I would say what differentiates the city of El Segundo, which I believe Mr. Pickhaber talked about, is that ninety-eight percent of our revenue comes from business, less than two percent from residents' property taxes. So having continuity in the mayoral seat does make a difference. And I can tell you, if you counter that to Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, where every ten to eleven months, literally, they're rotating mayors. You never know who the mayor is. We want to have a meeting with the city of Inglewood, well, who's the mayor at the time? You have to actually go look it up on the website. So I think we should be directly electing the mayor, and this is far after I'm gone. This could be, Adam, you're laughing at me? I don't think he likes that idea, but yeah. We should directly, probably, elect a mayor. And I, I've said this, and people have asked me, well, what if you don't get the mayor's seat? I'm fine with that. I just want to spend four years on city council. Would I like to be mayor again? Sure. But I'm also absolutely fine with serving on city council for the next four years. Thank you.
Thanks. Lance?
I think we can answer this question by acknowledging that eighty percent of this town thinks that we have an elected mayor. That's the truth. People think that Drew's running for the mayorship. And I think that's part of the reason why I think it's important that we do things the way we do it. I do not like the Manhattan Beach system, eleven months, there's no continuity, a hundred percent agree with that. But I do think there should be two years, change it, two years, you could, just don't do two years consecutively. And the reason being is that it is a five-member council. Each one of our votes counts for the exact same, no matter which hat you're wearing. So I, I think that's important, because you don't want one seat or one person to become so much more important in the community, or appear to be more important or bigger than the rest. Because in the end, you want to have good candidates come up here to run for something like that. And I think if you have a, an elected mayor, you will have a lot less candidates running for city council. So I do like the way we do it. I really wouldn't want to change it. The only thing I would potentially change is not to do two consecutive term, two-year terms as mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Carol, next question will begin with you. What are your thoughts on the current crime statistics in El Segundo? And what would you do as a local policymaker to affect change on the subject?
So crime is, safety for our community is very important. It's definitely why I moved back to town, and I'm sure a lot of people moved here, to ensure that they have a safe environment, especially for their kids and their family members. You know, as a city, the, as a city council, the, the only, the things we can do is we can ensure our police force has the tools, the technology, and the, the staffing to, to protect our town and to provide the, the safe, the adequate safety that we feel we need. The, one of the other things we can do is ensure that our city manager hires an amazing police chief. And I think we've done that with Raul Rodriguez. Chief Rodriguez has really brought a different perspective to our town. He's enhanced our homeless, homeless outreach. He's putting, he's really big on community policing, putting police back on the streets. And we've empowered him to look at our police department to determine, how should it look in the future? One of the other things we've done as a council is we've, we've allowed, and we've voted to enable them to hire on ten additional police officers, which will bring it up from sixty-two to seventy-two. Currently, we have fifty-three officers with nine in training, and that's not enough. But it's hard, because we're in, we're at a time when it's very hard to find talented police officers. So one of the other things we have approved was a lateral bonus for experienced police officers to come over to our town, as well as we've, we've implemented, we've approved a compensation package for our current residents, our current police, sorry. Thank you.
Michelle?
On cue screaming. The, you know, crime statistics in El Segundo, the majority of our theft, petty theft, petty theft, is happening actually east of PCH at Plaza El Segundo. I know that certain stores, like a Lululemon, has a policy in place. If somebody walks in and steals something, let them walk out. That's a corporate policy. But that said, just because we are a community that fortunately does not experience violent crime, if you are one of the few residents or homeowners who have had their house broken into, I will tell you, because I've spoken to a few of them, it's an incredibly traumatizing and vulnerable experience. And we want to make sure in the city of El Segundo, even if it is, that level of crime is a rare occurrence, that it doesn't happen. We want to continue to be a community where you can feel safe walking your dog at ten o'clock at night, where you can leave your kids home alone while you're running out. And that is really, it has become a privilege that we've all gotten used to, but it's not a guarantee. And I do think that our police department needs to have the resources in place to serve the community at the highest level, hire the best personnel, have adequate training. And I was very happy to see our police force grow from the fifty-three sworn officers to sixty-two. I think that that is a good move, and having just more presence will help be a deterrent to the type of crime that we're certainly trying to avoid.
Thank you. Drew?
All right. I mean, I don't think it really matters what the stats are. Sure, it matters, we look at them, we have to report them to the FBI. But I would ask all of you, how do you feel right now? Do you feel safe? And if the answer is, I'm concerned about my safety, that's all that matters. It's really about how do the residents feel in the town that they live in, and that's what we need to address. And we've done a lot, but there's so much more to be done. I personally met with District Attorney Gascon, along with the city manager and former chief of police, to implore him to start prosecuting criminals. Ever since Prop forty-seven, it has been very difficult for our police agencies to actually prosecute. There's almost no retribution for crime under a thousand dollars right now. And I would urge you to look at Prop thirty-six, when you're looking at your ballots. We've also implemented recruitment bonuses. We were the first agency in LA County to offer a sizable recruitment bonus of twenty-five thousand dollars, and that worked. We're now at forty thousand dollars. We're being usurped by Torrance, which is at a hundred thousand dollars. But the good news is, police officers don't really want to work there. Nothing against Torrance, but they're under a DOJ investigation. So we've led an incredibly good police department with no significant incidents. It's all about the leadership, and there's a lot more to be done. We are going to seventy-two sworn officers, we had sixty-two right now, four more in training, that brings us to sixty-six. And the chief, I just spoke to him today, feels really good about getting to seventy-two police officers roughly Q1. We also added a fourth patrol beat to help with the retail, as Mrs. Keldorf mentioned. Thank you.
Lance?
All right. I agree on a couple of things here. First of all, obviously, the crime statistics are the, are the issue, but the problem stems from two different things. One, as Drew just mentioned, was Prop forty-seven, I think that was back in 2014, which basically made a lot of crimes into site and release. Prop thirty-six, which you have on your ballots right now, helps reform that. It's very important. So if we want to start fixing some of these problems, this is one of the ways to give our police the ability to enforce the laws that we want enforced. And the other thing that was a problem from this was a defund the police movement. You, sorry, but you can't get away from that. It has hurt recruitment, it has hurt retention, it has hurt retirements, and that is nationwide. So those are things that have happened that we're still dealing with right now in present day. But a lot of the, the answers to that are, you know, empowering and funding our police force, which you've talked about, investing in, in all the latest technologies as well, because we want to be able to do that, and, and be able to give our, our law enforcement the right tools to do everything they can to commit, to keep the community safe. I did not have the pleasure or displeasure of meeting with District Attorney Gascon, but that is also another decision you can make in the next thirty days, and I implore you to take a look at it, because that will directly affect how crime is in this town and the rest of LA County. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. John?
So why do people live in El Segundo? Invariably, the answer is, the schools, the small town, small-town charm. Well, the reason both of those things are true is because we're a safe community. I support the staffing increases, I support the lateral incentives to get the best police officers to come to El Segundo. I support us investing in recruitment, I want us to step that up. You know, I was in the police, Community Police Academy a couple of years ago, and I know that they could use more resources on the ground, just with recruiting in general. And I think since that time, we have improved, but I want to make sure we're doing that as well. I also support the investment in technology. That not only makes police, policing safer, but it also cuts the price tag a lot when you invest in state-of-the-art technology. And I also think we can really double down our efforts on crime prevention here in town. I've been a victim of crime in El Segundo, I had a bike stolen, it was behind a locked gate, it was locked up. I don't know what more I could have done in that situation, besides maybe bring it inside. But a lot of crime that happens in El Segundo is preventable with more proactive steps. And I think it's great how embedded the El Segundo Police Department is in our community at a lot of our events in town. They always have something different going at their, their tent. And if we could, you know, put a priority to talk about crime prevention best practices, I think we can see a lot of that avoided. There was one thing that Mayor Boyle said about, it doesn't matter what the stats are, it's how we feel. Like I said, I've been a victim of crime, nobody wants to be a victim of crime, but we can't be blinded by feelings. We have to stick to the data and make expensive decisions based on that. We have to stick to the data and make expensive decisions based on that. The last thing I'll say is, from going town to town, people want to see more patrol on the west side of town at night. Our daytime population is less at the time, so I think we should be doing that as well.
Thank you. Michelle, next question. Just as presidential candidates, candidates speak about things they want to accomplish in their first one hundred days in office, what would you like to see done in your first one hundred days in office if elected? And what would you do to garner support from your fellow elected council members in order to see it achieved?
This is a really good question. So congratulations to whoever submitted it. In the first hundred days in office, something very long-term that I really do think we need to plan for is our capital improvement needs. That money is not going to shake out on its own. And I would like to see us develop a one-year, three-year, five-year, and ten-year plan. That involves conversations with our city manager and all of the various departments on how we go about doing that. So what is the first step? I think that that is breaking larger projects out into smaller pieces. It is creating a longer-term plan for investing that money so that we're generating interest. So that's definitely a key focus. I've talked about this previously. It hasn't come up tonight yet, but when we talk about Hyperion, I would propose that we look at hiring a state-level lobbyist. Again, we have spent thousands of hours of staff resources. We have paid for consultants. We have, we have spent so much time trying to solve this on our own. And I'm curious, and I would like to see a calculation of that in comparison to what it would cost us to hire somebody who could really try to effectuate managerial and operational improvements at Hyperion. In terms of working with my council members, you know, I have that experience currently now on planning commission as one of five. And I like the process of us throwing out ideas. I think it is idea generation. And that's how I envision working together going forward.
Thank you, Michelle. Drew?
Thank you. Well, there's a couple of things I'd like to see done. One is, I would like to see the beach clean. I'd like to, I just, as I mentioned, met with Councilwoman Tracy Park. And the reason I met with her is I'm very concerned about the homelessness. Because again, every city in LA County has the ability to handle this issue differently now with the Grants Pass ruling. And when you leave a meeting in Venice with Councilwoman Tracy Park, and you drive down Dockweiler, and you see fourteen tents that have popped up in the three weeks that you were last there, since they were last torn down, you, you get to be concerned. There are three homeless people in town that I see on a regular basis at Starbucks. I could explain, I could describe them to you exactly. That's how I knew today, there were two new people in town at the bus stop that I hadn't recognized before. I'll know we're getting success, we're achieving success, and we're placing people and getting them the wraparound services they need, when I'm no longer seeing those people in Starbucks and about town. They're actually getting housed, and they're actually getting help. I would also like to see our Hyperion consultant, who we just approved, who's actually going to be at the facility at Hyperion to hold them accountable, get results. And I would also like to see us land our first-ever venture fund of a five-hundred million dollars, because that's a real stamp of approval that we've made it as a city. Oh, guess what, though? That one's already been done. And the announcement's coming soon. That's huge for El Segundo. That was going to, going to continue to grow our economic base in Smoky Hollow and through the entire city. Thank you.
Lance?
One of the benefits of being on council currently is that the next hundred days is kind of already planned out. There's a lot on the agenda. But to answer your question, actually, the first one, I'm going to agree with Michelle on this. I think the CIP funding is, is one of the most important things that we have to address. For example, I, I mentioned plunge like three times tonight. We're raising money to do that. We don't actually have that in our budget right now. So there's a lot of things that are big-ticket items that we are going to have to be proactive in figuring out how to fund them. Because the longer we wait, the more expensive they become to build. As we all know, anybody's even trying to do some home improvement right now. There is no easy way to do it. And every single month you wait, the cost goes up. It's the same thing when it comes to building in, in the city. The second thing would be, I, I really believe, and I said this the last time, that we need to invest in our own air quality monitoring. I think we need to own our own data. Because once you own the data, you own the narrative of what's actually being, what's in our air right now. And again, it's not just Hyperion, it's LAX, Scattergood, and Chevron. So it's going to be important to look at that. And I also believe we need to accelerate the park and rec plan. For, again, the same reasons for the, for the capital improvement discussion. We're, we seem to be taking an awful-long time to make decisions. And the longer we wait, the more the community suffers, and the more expensive it's going to become. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
In the first one hundred days, I'm going to limit this answer to tangible things that I think we can see. I, of course, think housing is important. I know Hyperion is important. And the capital improvement projects is a giant price tag that we need to address. But in the first one hundred days, I would like to, to see us really take pedestrian and cyclist safety seriously. I think that's something where we can see results right away. There's something called the South Bay Master Bike Plan that we're sort of tangential, excuse me, tangentially connected to, but, but not fully on. I want to see us explore what that looks like. Make our roads safer for kids on e-bikes, safer for kids, or excuse me, for adults commuting to work. You know, the other thing connected to that is four-way stops around town. I was hit by a car on Franklin out for a run a couple of years ago, at one of those intersections. Luckily, I, I was okay, but it could have been a lot worse. I feel like right now, when we want to see, say, a new stop sign or four-way intersection, someone says, how do I do this? And someone will say, well, make a comment on public, or on Facebook, and, you know, people will know. And then what they say is, okay, now you need to make a public comment at city council, but make sure to bring fifteen people with you so they know it's serious. What I want to do in the first one hundred days is take a proactive look at all of our high-risk intersections, and see which ones need stop signs, and get ahead of this before a tragedy occurs. I think another thing I want to do, and I think I only have a few seconds, is just really exploring what outdoor dining could look like. As bad as the pandemic was, it really brought the community together. And I think there's a way that can satisfy all stakeholders to bring that back.
Thank you. Carol?
So our city manager, Daryl George, and our, our, our building and planning, our public works director, Elias Sassoon, are sitting in the audience. And they're going to laugh, because they hear this from me every week. Can we please expedite the capital improvement, especially at our parks and recs? It's something that's very near and dear to me, and it's something I've been fighting for, to ensure that we push forward and try to shave off time to get these parks back up to the gems that they used to be. In addition, I'd like to fast-track the redevelopment of the defunct reservoir at Hilltop Park. Councilmember Baldino brought this to my attention. I think it's an amazing, amazing opportunity for us to actually, in, with a very little money, actually bring an, almost an acre of playable ground space to the city. And as everyone here who is in AOSO, or softball or baseball, knows, field play, field play, field space in our city is at a premium. And there's constantly fights over who can have what. And so by adding an acre of field space to our community for us, the students or the community, the children to play on, and adults, I think will be very beneficial to our community.
Thank you. Drew, the next question, we'll begin with you. Would you be in favor of investing city funds to support adding additional crossing guards around our schools and more school resource officers within our schools?
Yes, we have consistently demonstrated the appetite for investing in school crossing guards, as well as school resource officers. The city pays for crossing guards and school resource officers at our schools. And just recently, when I was knocking on doors, a couple of residents brought up concerns related to Main Street. One great idea I thought was to explore a crossing guard for football games. Because there's a lot of, and, and one of the residents, and I brought that up to Daryl George, brought this up specifically when knocking on door, that he had observed that it was a pretty unsafe condition. And that's an anomaly situation. We have a lot of people coming and going from that, from that facility. And so we moved on that. Daryl George, our city manager, is here. He looked into that. It's not a decision I can make. It's something that we bring forward. Anytime there's a traffic concern, we bring that forward to Elias Sassoon. So just to comment on something that Mr. Pickhaver said, we view these traffic situations very seriously. There's actually a committee that does an undertaking to determine whether or not a traffic stop sign or signal is warranted. And in some cases, we've demonstrated that we will put traffic, or four-way signals, or four-way stops, I should say, in place despite it not being warranted. And the same holds true. We will continue to invest in crossing guards or school resource officers to the extent that we need to keep our students safe, which are a big part of our population.
Thank you, Drew. Lance?
Yes, I, I think we are, we have to also take into consideration that the city's evolved. There's, there's a lot, there's no more walking to school for the most part. Some people do. If you live a couple of blocks away, you do. But for the most part, people get dropped off. So there's an awful lot more cars out there in the morning and in the afternoon than there ever was. So the SROs, absolutely, you know, as Drew mentioned, we pay for that now. I think we are good there. I think the biggest problem right now, or the biggest challenge, is the crossing guards. Because it's actually started to, to kind of migrate out. I had some meetings a week or so ago with people living in the apartments in, in the Illinois and Freedom Park area. We forget that Center Street School has two entrances. You got the front entrance, then you got people that come in through the back entrance as well. And we need to start taking, taking ownership over that, because there's a lot that goes on, as you all know, on Mariposa, kind of driving down towards that street and on the California. So I think we need to kind of take a little bit more of a holistic look at what that looks like. The other thing that I've asked about is, I know there's a lot of people that are willing to be a volunteer, and, and learn how to do this. And, but in order to do this, we need to have a program, in order to be able to teach people what they're supposed to do, be certified. And I think we need to look into a combination of both the residents kind of jumping in, as well as investing in new ones. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I agree with a lot that's been said, just off of Lance's point. My crossing guard in my school, K through eight, was a volunteer, an old man that retired and was the nicest guy ever. I'm sure there are people in the community who would take that on with, with the proper training. But on top of that, yes, I think we should invest in more crossing guards. As far as school resource officers, that's not something I'm opposed to. I, I see Daima Wheaton here on the school board. I would engage with the school board on, on what they need and make sure that they get what they need. I talked about this in my last answer. I think another way to address this is through safer intersections. And also maybe a couple of weeks of traffic enforcement in that area. I know Vista Del Mar, when I used to work at Sony, I would take that road every day. And there would be a cop there almost every day slowing people down. If you get a ticket on that road, you change your behavior. And a lot of people passing through these areas, they have the same routine. So I think lessons will be learned with a little enforcement. And that combined with investment in crossing guards and school resource officer, school resource officers, if needed, I think we'll have a much safer school community.
Thank you. Carol?
Yes, I think it's important and a responsibility of the city to protect the children as they walk to school. I was on the council when a former city council member tried to stop us funding the crossing guards. And it became a bit of a battle, but I'm happy to say that we won and continue to fund the crossing guards. Because the, the schools do not have the funds available to provide that service. And it's important that we, as a city, help the schools in a partnership and provide to ensure our kids, students are safe. You know, I believe the cost of the crossing guards is about a hundred, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Don't quote me, but it's, I believe it's not, it's around that number. And it's such a small amount to protect our children. So yes, I am very for protecting, paying, paying for additional crossing guards and any other services that keep our kids safe at our schools. Thank you.
Michelle?
And I will reiterate much of what's already been said, but absolutely, the health and safety of our residents is my top priority. I think Lance and I are fortunate to live on a block where our kids have walked to school almost every day to Center Street and middle school. And anybody who crosses on that side of Center Street can tell you, they take great comfort in seeing Mr. James out there. He not only makes sure that they get there safe, but is sure to keep tabs and let me know if anybody's been up to some nonsense. So I appreciate that. And I would fully invest in making sure that we do have crossing guards as needed, and school resource officers. I think the statistic is eighty-five percent of our school-age residents do attend El Segundo schools. And so really, those are, you know, we share the same customers. And it is important that we keep everyone safe, kids in particular. So I would have no problems increasing that. I do also agree with Carol. It's a, a fairly low-cost spend on something that's hugely impactful.
Thank you. Lance, you'll begin with the next question. Will you continue to support the one percent city assessment for the arts and culture efforts? And if so, how would you ensure the fund becomes an endowment for continued future self-funding growth, and ensure the funds are not misappropriated for other city projects?
Yes, I one hundred percent support the one percent for the arts. I think you can see the value of it in, in our community. From the different events that we just talked about earlier this evening, to the, just the, the whole, just feel of this town, again. I mean, you're talking about the art walk. You're talking about Juneteenth. You're talking about festival holidays. You're talking about a lot of things here that support that one percent. Now, those that are potentially looking at, what's bad about the one percent is, is that it does put a little bit more onus on, on the builders and on the developers. Okay, it costs a little bit more. I get that. I, I do understand. However, I do think it's very important that we continue along the trajectory we are on, because it has transformed this city. We are more culturally diverse because of, we are more aware because of it. We have more events to attend because of it. It's really enhanced our community. And I believe that we need to continue this as, into the future. And I do not believe that we should be adjusting it. Thank you.
John?
Yes, I agree. I've said a number of times now that I'm the chairperson of the Arts and Culture Committee, so I very much want to see this fund exist. For those not familiar with it, basically what happens when a commercial developer, or commercial development happens in El Segundo, over two million dollars, one percent of that goes into this arts fund, or they put art on site. I personally would like to see that language broaden a little bit, so it could be a combination of the two, rather than a binary choice. I'll tell you, having looked into this, we have one of the most business-friendly one percent for the art fund that there is. Short of asking the company to put a picture on their office fridge, we're one of the best cities to really bring businesses in for this. A lot of them have a much lower threshold. They also have included it when it's residential development. So it's a very business-friendly program that actually could probably use more investment. Like Lance said, all of the great events the last few years have been made possible through that fund. I would like to see us recommit to it even more. You know, currently, the staff person in that position, that salary, is funded through the one percent for the art funds. If we really want to keep that a, a stable position and get the most out of the person in that position, that salary should really come from the general fund. So each year, whoever's in that position isn't saying, ooh, am I going to have a job next year, based on what's coming in? I think we need to be serious about the arts and recognize how it can actually be not just, you know, beautiful events and things to see, but also an economic engine for the city.
Carol?
Yes, I was on the committee that helped script and develop the program and get it, helped get it passed. So the arts are very important to me. As an owner of a dance company, I understand the importance of, of recognizing all forms of art. What I would like to see going forward is that the funds are used for functional art within our town. We're in the beginning phases of the redesign of the, of the rec park, as well as construction of the plunge. So I'd like to see some of that art, the funds being used to beautify these, these new, these capital improvement projects, so that they have longstanding art. We, we introduce art for a long time to our community. The other thing I'd like to see, the, the Main Street be lit up with some light, with a lot of lights, in artistic, in an artistic manner. And I know that's some, something we've been challenged, we've been discussing, and I hope that can get approved this year. Thank you.
Michelle?
I would agree. I would like to see us continue forward with earmarking that one percent to arts and culture. And as my fellow candidates have said, there are a number of ways that that plays out in our community. It really has fed our ability to expand the number of community events that we host. And I think that directly speaks to our ability to stay connected, creating more opportunities to get together and celebrate is always a good thing. And the Arts and Culture Committee funding those efforts in large part has been great. I, I remember a point in time, too, where we were having speaker series and things like that, that were, was through the library, library services, oftentimes here in this auditorium. And that's something that really speaks to, again, our connection and an ability to have an educational and emotional experience at the same time. I do agree that I would be okay or a proponent of at least ensuring that some of those funds do go to actual public art versus just the community events. I believe developers do have the option of either providing that onsite or paying into this fund, and ways that we could potentially encourage that, so that we are seeing some beautification of our facilities, I would also be supportive of.
Thank you. Drew?
Yeah, I love art. In fact, when I built, let's see, before I built the property in Eucalyptus, it was a warehouse. I bought that property from Tyler Hadziki and Tyler and Catherine of Tyler Surfboards. And I had Damian Fulton, an El Segundo resident, put an incredible mural on our building. And I did it in a way, I knew I was going to scrape that building at one point and build it to a three-story building. So I had it done on big panels, and then I moved it and repositioned that art. I did that before it was mandated. And while I love art, I was a no vote on one percent for the arts when it came up to the dais. And I'll continue to be a no vote. I've actually asked council or city manager to put it back on the agenda for discussion. And I'll tell you why. I am uniquely qualified to understand what it's like when you have to build a building, but also when you hear from large employers in town. but also when you hear from large employers in town, employers that we're looking to keep here. And they tell you, this is a ridiculous fee, as much as a million dollars for development for one, with one of our employers. That is a huge price tag. It's already difficult enough to do business in California from a taxes standpoint, regulatory burden, wages and hours. I have several hundred employees. I can tell you firsthand, it is difficult to do business in this state. So we have to continue to be competitive against our peer cities in any way that we can. And tacking on another fee does not help. So we should encourage art. And one of the things I asked for back when it came on the dais originally is at least allow the developers to do their own art on the building. And that has been allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Uh, John, we've got a question that you'll begin with. What role, if any, do you think partisan politics should have on local elections?
Yeah. So I addressed this in an earlier answer. I think ideally never, right? But everybody comes with their own personal politics that informs key decisions. Right now, we have a presidential election that will have huge local implications. So the role I think to me is identifying the value set. I, I talk about housing a lot and I already mentioned that I'm the only registered Democrat in the race endorsed by the Los Angeles County Democratic Party. And in that party, they have on their platform, recognizing that there is a housing shortage here and that we need to address this in a way that keeps people from being priced out of where they grew up, allows young people to move back in the town that they grew up in. Right now, I don't think we're acknowledging the gravity of this crisis. And I think it's because those partisan politics perhaps aren't represented on the city council on that issue. I talked about the DEI committee earlier in my answer and how we put people on there who didn't believe in systemic racism, who didn't believe LGBTQ people were a marginalized group. That is not a value set of the Democratic Party. We want to empower those people on there. So yes, I wish I could say we were all created in a lab and had no personal opinions about national issues, but we do. And they have real local implications here. And I think it's important to know.
Thank you. Carol?
I believe local elections should stay local. If we as a council do not focus on the roads, the services, safety, first responders, no one else will. When you, you know, we have many levels of government in our state and then in our federal government. And at each level, your, those, those levels focus on the area that they encompass. And if we as a council do not focus on what's important to El Segundo, no one else will. So as a council, I do believe, as a, as a resident and a council member, I do believe local elections should stay nonpartisan and focused on local issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, I wish we could keep partisan politics out of national elections, but we can't. And so that's why I am running for city council because I do believe that the best opportunity for that is local. Um, and that's because, you know, in the old world before social media, we would go decades sitting next to someone at a baseball game, at a soccer game and really not know where they stood nationally politically. And I think that speaks to why we have a town that accomplishes so much because it gives us an opportunity not to get mired down in fringe inviting and actually accomplish things because we're all serving, we're all are looking for the same ends. Maybe a different means to an end, but the same end. And that's a healthy, vibrant, safe, thriving community. Um, I am, I'm a registered no party preference and that's not a political ploy. I think it speaks to, I've been registered as that long before I ever intended to run for office, but it speaks to my disposition as a pretty moderate person. And I'm open to the best solution, um, regardless of what your political leanings might be. And that is what excites me most about the opportunity to serve on city council. I think if there is a realm that we can do that, it's here in this community and keeping our focus on local issues.
Thank you. Drew?
As I mentioned, I've been on the city council since 2016. I didn't know anyone's party affiliation on this current city council until Mr. Pickhaver called it out. And really, I think that's how it should be. We're there to work together on local issues because that's where things get done locally. We actually get, we move mountains relative to state, local, a county, federal, without any partisan politicking at play. And at the end of the day, actions speak louder than words. If you look at what this council has achieved and the challenges we face, be it the pandemic, be it Hyperion, we faced a lot as a city and we've remained united as a city. And that's how we should be, stay the same. We should continue to be united. And so local politics is where it matters. Partisanship has no business being in local politics as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Lance?
I was wondering if this was going to come up. It's been interesting the last week or so seeing some things in, in social media, but I mean, I have to echo what's already been set up here, but the reality is, is that the, if there was partisan politics up here right now, there's no possible way that we should be agreeing on anything. There's no way John and I should have agreed on anything over the past two forums because apparently we can't, we can't. It's just not the way it goes. Because if you're on one party line and you're dedicated to that party, you go right down that ticket. You can't disagree. You can't agree, or you can disagree all you want, you can't agree. So the reality is, is that these issues and the way we've talked about them, we're talking about solutions to these questions or to these problems and what's the best interest of the community. Political affiliation doesn't matter. It really doesn't. I mean, I don't know about any of you, but I got registered to vote when I was eighteen years old. I haven't changed it. I, I literally was a senior in high school, in an auditorium just like this. This is how I got voted in, but I, I, how I got, um, registered. But I make decisions based on what I think is the right thing, not, not for what someone tells me to do. And let's face it, political parties and partisanship, they tell you what to think. Do you want to be told what to think? I don't. I want to make decisions in what's in the best interest of this city. And I really don't care what anyone's affiliation is. Thank you.
Thank you. That's going to conclude the long form questions, but we have something kind of fun for you guys. We have a lightning round.
Who said fun?
So for these next six questions, they're really one word answers. Okay. And rather than try to go, you know, like John and then Carol, and we're just going to start with you, John, because otherwise I'm going to lose it.
Sure.
Right? Um, so six questions and you guys get basically one word answers.
Basically.
Okay. Would you be willing to support the return of a walk street in El Segundo like the kind we had on Richmond Street during the first years of COVID? Yes or no?
Yes. Sorry, was it a buzzer kind of thing?
Yes, I'd be interested in exploring that.
Yes.
Yes.
You already got my answer.
Yes.
Okay. Would you support the city spending tax dollars to subsidize the cost of rent for low income qualifying residents? Yes or no?
I think there are a lot of federal programs for that, so I'd say no.
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 Okay. Beyond El Segundo city council, do you have any higher political aspirations? Yes or no?
No.
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 Absolutely not.
That was two words, Lance.
There was. They were good words though.
Is it more helpful or hurtful for city politicians to engage in social media while they are in office? Please answer helpful or hurtful.
Helpful.
Hurtful. I don't know. It depends.
I'm sorry.
I, I agree with Michelle. It depends. But I'll say if I had to pick one, helpful.
Helpful.
What, so this one is more free form, but still short answer. What is your one favorite Kiwanis event?
I only have a few words. That's, that's not fair. Uh, I would say the Main Street Fair. It's just really brings downtown alive. And I, you know, told you this the other day. I thought the main stage was just amazing this year. Shout out to payday. And, uh, that's my favorite Kiwanis event.
I love that the Kiwanis supports, uh, the Link Room program and Link Room program and the web program at the middle school. It's a program that brings students, introduces students to their new school and brings people together and makes it a safe zone for everybody.
The Main Street Fair, although if I did play golf, I hear the golf event is pretty fun. So I'm going to go Main Street Fair because I don't.
Kiwanis is still looking for sponsors and golfers, by the way. Hit up Scott Nickel. I think he's here. My favorite thing is the board meeting, of course. I'm just kidding. It's, those are pretty bad. I've been a member like twenty years. No offense, Eric, you're the current president. I would say that, uh, mine is the funk holiday party. But you have to be a Kiwanis member to attend. So highly coveted. I suggest you join. Thank you.
Uh, devil said the Main Street Fair, the golf tournament's great, but it, it does have a tendency to go sideways.
Thank you. The last one's a softball. Pineapple on pizza. Yes or no?
No.
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 Only with pep, uh, with jalapeno. Sorry, no.
Yes.
All right. That concludes our questions. We will start with our closing statements from each candidate, starting with Lance and working back to me. You'll have two minutes each.
All right. Thank you again for coming out here tonight. Um, you know, one thing I said in my opening statement was, is that I was hoping that you could figure out the why, or at least I think I was hoping I could provide that why for you. Um, you know, number one, I'm, I'm a known commodity. You've seen me for four and a half years. There's, there's no hiding up here. Um, we have four and a half years of El Segundo TV, uh, replays of city council meetings, if anybody wants to look through those. Um, Herald articles, you name it. Uh, you know what you're going to get with me. And that means something. You know, I've done this. I've been here. And I think that's a big part of it. Um, I don't recuse myself from things. I don't step away from things. I step into the difficult topics, um, as I've kind of said tonight, regardless of, of where that might be on a politically friendly spectrum, I, I step into them because I think that's what's expected of me. Um, I'm not afraid to take a stand, um, sometimes in my detriment, but I take that stand. And a lot of times, um, I am the sole voice that takes the stand and speaks up and will do so in a public environment. If you look at the history of me over the past four and a half years, I mean, George Floyd incident, although I will say Drew did, outside of city hall, did, did make a statement there, but George Floyd incident. Um, when our police chief held up a Black Lives Matter sign at, at, at a, um, not a protest, but a march down Main Street, that, that was a lot. People were really concerned, like, what's going on there? Um, but I made a statement about that. Um, when the LA County sheriffs were shot in the head in their cars, I made a statement about that. And the peaceful protest that happened outside of Raytheon, that was a, a pro Palestinian peaceful protest that quickly turned into an anti-Semitic, anti-Israel protest, I spoke up on that as well. So I am not afraid to do that. And I think that's important because I think that's what leaders do. That's what I expect out of the people that I will vote for. And I hope I have done enough to earn that vote for you on November 5th. Thank you.
Yeah, it's so great to be here. Thanks again for hosting it. Eric, great job. I love the speed round. And, uh, I know Kara, you were involved in this as well. Thanks again to the Key Club. I'm really proud of what we've done, but there's still so much more to be done. I mean, again, 2016, we had sixty-five million in general fund. We now are sitting at ninety-five million dollars in general fund revenue. That pays for everything. Police, fire, libraries, Rexon Park, you name it. Everything is paid through that. And we did that with no increases to residents' taxes. On the residential satisfaction, I said in 2016, we're going to listen better to our residents. So we deployed a net promoter score survey. If you don't get it, please ask us about it. You can hit up Daryl George right there. We take those surveys very seriously, not just the quantitative scores, how are we doing, but the qualitative comments. Uh, we've also added money for infrastructure and actually gotten things across the finish line or soon to be doing that. We have our first ever AAA bond rating as a city. That is the gold standard. That was an exhaustive process to go through. And that is an example of how well we are leading this city on all aspects. You don't just get AAA bond ratings for nothing. That was a huge accomplishment. And there's still a lot more to be done. I'll continue to focus on being available with my mayor's open hour. If I'm not a mayor, I'll still do it. I'll be out there, blue butterfly. Hopefully it's not my mom just showing up every time. You guys, please join me. I've got one tomorrow night at five PM. I'll continue to be transparent, collaborative with whomever I work with and within the region. If you see me on the street, stop me. I love talking to people and hearing their concerns. I pride myself on being nimble and responsive, often getting back to constituents within twenty-four hours, usually hours, several hours. I'm going to continue to be that way, whether I'm the mayor or not. I look forward to being your city council member for another four years. I'll be a spring chicken of fifty-eight by then and off to go surf more countries and spend more time with my family. But for now, I got a lot more work to do. Thank you very much. I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you again to Kiwanis for hosting tonight and creating this opportunity to hear directly from residents. It's always my favorite part of this process. The wellbeing of our community is my top priority and it really will be my guiding principle as I work towards solutions on resident-focused interests. So what does it mean to lead with your needs first? To me, it's advocating for state-level assistance to drive real management and operational improvements at Hyperion. It's focusing on prioritizing construction starts, on improvements to our parks, public buildings and infrastructure. We have allocated funds to these capital projects and delays cost residents real money as construction costs only increase over time. Maximizing our financial resources is key to residents' interests. We must continue to fund top-level public safety and essential services. And while we didn't discuss it as much this time at the last forum, it was pretty topical. I believe that we can apply land use tools that drive business innovation and revenue generation for our city's general fund. I have the professional background and the personal tenacity to move these efforts forward. But moreover, I believe deeply in what is possible when we all come together to support one another. It really is the through line of the El Segundo experience. I will always carry with me the way this community supported my family during a time of incredible personal loss. And I can still feel the way this town was reverberating with pride and joy as we did last summer when residents and small businesses came together to support a group of young people who were representing teamwork, determination, and the city of El Segundo on the national stage. It was a magical and unifying experience that speaks much more to our connection as a community than it ever will be about baseball. And when I ask for your vote on November 5th, it's because I am certain that we can apply that same energy in ways that benefit our entire community. I'm passionate about representing you on city council and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's important. You know, this is a great process where we bring the candidates together to hear their views and opinions. Um, when I joined the council eight years ago, the city had a lot of opportunities. Um, we had a very large pension liability debt. We were behind in technology. Our capital improvements had not been invested in. And when we met with each of the department heads, every single department head said they had a morale issue within their department. Well, fast forward eight years, we have paid down our, our pension liability debt. We have a balanced budget with a twenty-five percent reserve. We have, as Drew mentioned, we received the AAA rating on a bond measure for AAA rating for standard and pores. We've invested in new technology in every department. And our last one that we're working on is the ERP system for the finance department. And when we met with the HR directors last week, not one of them said they had a morale issue and everyone very positive and were happy with the, the, how the community, the, the city has changed and developed. But we're not done yet. You know, there's a lot of capital improvement projects that need to be completed and it's, that will be my focus in the next four years, as well as attracting new businesses to our, to our town to ensure that the vacancy in our commercial zone gets back up to where it was. Cause currently I believe we're at twenty-five percent. And we need to continue to invest in capital improvement so that our parks become the gems that they once were. And I'd be honored to have your vote in November. Thank you.
As a long distance runner, I know that every race is an opportunity to push forward and aim higher. This city council race provides that exact opportunity. An opportunity to help make El Segundo the very best city it can be. I'm committed to preserving what we cherish most about El Segundo, our small-town charm, excellent schools, public safety, and economic opportunity. But it's time our city council finally be more reflective of the community it represents. It's a community who's far more open to new ideas, that supports smart-on-crime measures and common sense housing solutions, that prioritizes pedestrian and cyclist safety so we can all move about our city with comfort and ease, and a community that wants to see the highest standards of transparency upheld throughout all our city institutions. I will bring this representation to council and make sure that everyone I will bring this representation to council and make sure that everyone feels seen, heard and empowered. I've dedicated myself to uplifting voices that have long been overlooked, from persuading the city to celebrate LGBTQ plus Pride Month for the first time, to co-organizing the health survey after the Hyperion disaster and holding our elected representatives accountable at every turn. I consistently strive to foster a more inclusive and effective local government. That's why I'm asking for your vote. To ensure that every resident, whether you've lived here for decades or just beginning to call El Segundo home, whether you're black or white, gay or straight, rent or own, whether you prefer two guns over blue butterfly, I want everyone to feel truly valued and welcomed here. The next step is to have a seat at the table, a voice on the dais and a vote on the council so we can cultivate a city that's representative of everyone and shape an El Segundo that reflects our shared values and aspirations for the future. Thank you all again for being here tonight and being so engaged in this race. It really means a lot.
Thank you, candidates. On behalf of the El Segundo Kiwanis Club, I want to thank the city council candidates for being here this evening and for their thoughtful and respectful responses and sharing your time with us. I'd like to mention to you guys that none of this happens in a vacuum. There are committees that work behind the scenes to make this work. Kara led the one for the Kiwanis Club. The women's club was indispensable for her. Carol Cervantes led the women's club committee. And we couldn't do it without them. We certainly couldn't have done it without Kara, Kara. So thank you. We couldn't have done it without the Key Club either. Thank you guys for timing. Thank you guys for ushering as well. I would like to thank all of you, our audience, and everybody watching at home on YouTube later for coming to hear this evening's discussion and for being a wonderful audience. Thank you and good night.